Please let me know if you'd like to borrow a receiver. If you'd like to address the commission regarding an agenda item, please do so at one of these podiums. Only use the center console if you have presentation materials. And I'll hand you a microphone similar to the one I'm holding. Otherwise, speak clearly into those microphones. During public hearing, the Chair will ask for community comment after city staff members and proponents make their presentations. When addressing the commission, please remark or please clearly state your full name and address. If you live in an apartment or condo complex, please state your unit number as well. Tonight's meeting will be rebroadcast on Edina TV, channels 8, 13, and channel 12, 36 for CenturyLink subscribers. And you can also view the video online at edinamn.gov. Thank you.
All right. Well, good evening. Finally, the sun's out and we're in here. Well, welcome to the June 28 Planning Commission meeting. And Jackie, would you take roll call?
Yes. Commissioner.
Here. Present.
Commissioner.
Here.
Commissioner.
Here.
Commissioner.
Here.
Commissioner.
Here.
Chair.
Here. Thank you, Jackie. Next on the agenda is to approve the agenda. Are there any amendments to the agenda?
I move approval of the agenda as submitted.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Approved. Then next, we have to approve the meeting minutes from June 14th. Were there any comments or edits to the June 14th meeting minutes?
I move approval of the minutes as submitted.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. Thank you. All right. Well, we have three public hearings tonight. And the first public hearing is a subdivision with variances at 5404 Park Place.
Okay. Thank you, Chair. Members of the Planning Commission. Our first request is a subdivision, as mentioned, with a couple of variances that are attached to each lot. Property is located just south of Minnehaha Creek, south of 54th Street on Park Place. You can see the building is oversized when compared to many of the other lots in the area. This property was originally platted as two lots when this area was platted. The original homeowner purchased two lots and built the main house on the north lot, as indicated on the screen. This is a rendering of what the house looks like from Park Place. You can see it's vegetated on the southeast side. One thing that's unique about this property is it takes access off of Brookview Avenue in this location here to the main house. So there's no access currently on Park Place. So this request requires a subdivision. Lot width variances from 75 feet to 65 feet for each lot, and lot area variances from 9,000 square feet to 8,700 and 8,800 square feet. So as with all of our subdivision requests, the applicant puts together what the medians are for lot area width and depth. That's calculated from all the properties within 500 feet. So the diagram on the screen indicates the area that establishes the median. For properties that are larger than 9,000 square feet, those medians become the minimum lot size. For properties under 9,000 square feet or 75 feet in width, that is the standard. This is an area that has a mixture of properties over and under those minimums. So the medians that came in, you can barely see it on the screen, but it's 8,100 square feet is the median. The median depth is 135 feet, and the median width is 60. So the two lots that are proposed here meet all of those medians within 500 feet of the So the applicant is proposing to utilize that existing easement from Brookview Avenue to serve a proposed new home, the Northwest Lot. The existing home would be removed, and the existing detached garage you can hear, you can see here straddles the proposed lot line. That would be removed as well. They're proposing to access the Easterly Lot off of Park Place. So here's a look at the original South Harriet Park plat. You can see the lot was platted as two lots. So in looking at some of the grading and drainage plan is on the screen here, the drainage generally runs to the north and east. The applicant is proposing rainwater gardens along Park Place to treat some of that runoff before it goes into Minnehaha Creek. As we look at with all of our subdivisions that we get within this area, we take a look at some of the history of subdivisions that we've done. The map on the screen, this is located anywhere from four to eight blocks to the south. As you can see, the properties that are highlighted in yellow have been approved for subdivisions. The ones in red have been denied. Purpose for showing this slide is really our history of subdivisions has varied from site to site. We really have focused on what's the character of that immediate neighborhood. Are the lots that are being proposed similar on that block? Or the ones that have been denied have had larger lots on that property? It's not, and the ones that were approved, it's more or less the last lot within the more immediate neighborhood. So primary issue for consideration are the findings for the variance met. In this case, staff believes that they are. Again, the property was originally platted as two lots. Practical difficulty is created by previous property owners that combined their two lots and built on the north lot. The proposed subdivision, again, is consistent with existing lots along Park Place and to the west, actually would, again, meet all of the medians that is established within 500 feet. We believe that the request is reasonable, given the neighborhood. If this property were denied, the applicant, the property owner, would be denied a subdivision of property that's, again, similar in the neighborhood. We don't believe it would alter the character of the neighborhood. Again, the lot size would be similar. So in conclusion, staff is recommending approval, subject to the findings and conditions that are outlined in the staff report. And I do want to mention one condition, and I think you'll hear concern in the neighborhood, is the existing easement. Concern is that both properties would gain access from that easement. We can't remove that easement. It's a private easement. They can maintain one access to the new home. So we would suggest a condition of approval, should you make the recommendation for approval, is that that southeast lot has to take access off of Park Place, and that the existing easement can only serve us one home. So with that, I will stand for any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Carrie. Are there any questions? Mr. Charles?
Carrie, under previous subdivisions that were reviewed, number 10, it's on the staff report, it was on 5845 Kellogg. Could you maybe just, do you recall why that was denied? I think I understand.
I do. You can kind of make it out here, but there were a number of 100-foot wide lots on the block. You can kind of see to the north, there were a couple of existing lots that were 100 feet. The property directly across the street from that site was 100 feet. So that character of that neighborhood was a real mixture of 100-foot wide lots and 50-foot wide lots. So the finding of the city council, and I believe it was recommended by the Planning Commission as well, that that subdivision wasn't in character with that neighborhood because of the immediately adjacent lots were oversized.
So in this one that's before us, it's a different situation there, right? Just as you were explaining.
I believe that it is different. Yes.
Thank you.
Anyone else with a question for Carrie? I just have a quick one. So we do have the ability to limit where they have access?
We do. And I spoke to the city attorney about this. We can't take away that easement. It's an existing private easement between the two properties. We can't require that that go away. If the two property owners agree to it going away, you know, they can remove it. But the city doesn't have the ability to demand that that one access point go away.
Is the applicant here? Would they like to speak? Thank you.
Thank you. Chair members of the commission. My name is Barb Schleifer, and I live at 5404 Park Place. My husband Paul is here. Barb Schleifer. And we also have our civil engineer who drew these drawings for us. If you have any technical questions, he'd be happy to answer your questions. Just want to say that we've lived in Edina for 28 years, raised our kids here, and when we purchased the property in 1999 from its original owner, we were under the assumption that it was two lots. We had a drawing that reflected what the county showed, which was that it was two separate lots. And that combined with the legal description, which describes it as lots two and three, block seven, South Harriet Park Division, we didn't think we needed to look any further to verify that it was two lots. It's only been in more recent years when we considered selling one of the lots that we realized we needed to go through this process to sort of unjoin the property. And so that's why we're here today. And if you have any questions of us, we'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions for the applicant? No? Okay. Thank you. All right. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
I move to open the public hearing.
Public hearing open. So this is a public hearing, so anyone has the ability, please come up. And you get three minutes, so you'll see those little lights. And when they turn red, that means your time's up. And please state your name and address. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is David Alkire. I live at 5400 Park Place, right next to the Schlefers. Begin by saying that we couldn't have asked for better neighbors than Paul and Barb and Annie and Ellie. We are here because we're planning for our next neighbors, though. And I wanted to just mention a few things about the project. The staff report mentions that the practical difficulty is due to the fact that previous property owners did not develop on the lot that is proposed to be divided. And that's certainly the case. And the other thing that happened at that time was that the property owners bought an easement for $1 from the people who owned our lot at the time, lot number one. And I think that's about $18 in today's dollars. That allowed access through our lot to lots two and three. And the staff report goes on to say that the requested variances to split this lot are reasonable in the context of the immediate neighborhood. We don't really have any quarrel with that. The size looks fine. And that the proposed subdivision would result in two lots more characteristic of the neighborhood. Our feeling is that the characteristic of the neighborhood is that Edina homes in our neighborhood gain access to their garages from the front, and that it would be an improvement to the characteristic of the neighborhood if these two new lots also had access to their garages from the front. The staff report also goes on to note that the condition is not created by the applicant. We certainly agree with that. It was not created by us either. The Schlefers have one lot that they would rather have be two, and we have a lot that has an easement that we would prefer not to have an easement. We understand that you can't remove the easement because it's a private easement, but you do have access or you do control access to the two new properties. So the staff seems agreeable to reversing previous owners' decisions to maintain the continuity characteristics of the neighborhood. And we're fine with the subdivision, but we would like to see both lots two and three access from the front, from Park Place, rather than through our property on Park Place from Brookview Avenue, like the rest of the neighborhood. And at the very least, we'd like to see, as it's drawn in the plats today, access to lot two only from Brookview, so at least to minimize the amount of traffic that we see going across our lot to one or two of the new lots. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Laura Seave. I'm a property owner of lot 17, which is the Brookview Lot that's adjacent to the easement. Again, as property owners, we have no difficulty with subdividing it into the two lots. The concern becomes one of the easement and the access to the two lots. My biggest concern is that if there is access to the two lots, I've lived there for 48 years, I knew the people that actually built the home there. He was Lee Todd, the original or the first mayor of Edina, in fact. It was for access to a one-car garage. With new homes being built now, you can see two- and three-car garages and all at once. What is going to happen is that is going to become an alley where you're going to have maybe six, eight, 10 cars accessing into those two properties. Again, my preference would be that that access would only occur for lot two, not for lot three. The concern that I have is that even if the easement is granted now, I mean, the variance is granted now, that some previous owner could come around for lot three and say, "Well, it still exists, and I want to bring my driveway in from that side." So that is my objection for something that would access more than one property back there because of the, basically, the congestion and the amount of traffic that would be occurred. So thank you, unless you have some questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Anybody else from the public? Is there a motion to close?
Motion to close the public hearing?
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Public hearing's closed. So bring it back to the Planning Commission. Are there any comments? Commissioner Marubi?
I guess I'm not clear. Planner Teague, is, regarding the easement, is anybody opposed to, I know you can't eliminate it, but is anybody opposed to having, changing it so it comes in through Park Place?
For the southeast lot, no. That is what the applicant is proposing.
Right. And what about the other one?
We would suggest that a condition H be added that states that specifically, so that gets filed on the title of the property, that the southeast lot must take access from Park Place.
Okay.
And would not have access available through the easement.
So the easement would remain for the one parcel?
Correct.
But both would access from Park Place?
No.
No.
The west lot would still take their access over the easement.
They could take their access over the easement, but they wouldn't have to.
Correct.
And we can't put anything in there saying they must take it from Park Place?
Correct.
Okay.
I guess you could condition that they have a driveway off Park Place, but they could still use the easement.
Because that transcends the purchaser?
Right.
Yeah. Or the seller. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Charles?
Carrie, I think it's, so the driveway easement is only serving, does not serve 5400, right? Only, okay, it just seems, having each lot have its own driveway seems to, in the long term, to be the best situation. Thank you.
Got a comment?
I move approval of the subdivision variances outlined in the staff notes, subject to the additional provision, condition H, that the southeast lot must take access from Park Place.
Is there a second?
There is.
Okay. Great. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. May? No? Motion approves. Thank you.
This will go to the city council on July 20th. Is that right? Is it the 20th or the?
All right. So the second public hearing tonight is a comprehensive plan amendment and rezoning for 5150 and 5220 Eden Avenue.
Before I start, let me correct myself. It goes to the city council July 18th.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Chair. Members of the Planning Commission. Before you is a request for a comprehensive plan amendment and a rezoning of the, well, the current Edina bus garage site, soon to be relocated into the industrial district. So located in Grand View. It's an aerial shot of the property. Two buildings exist with the outdoor storage of the buses. This property is guided in our comprehensive plan for MXC Mixed Use Center. The maximum height allowed by comprehensive plan is six stories. Property is currently zoned industrial, PID Planned Industrial District. So the existing use conforms to the zoning. This is our public discretion of land use process. This is what we take a look at for all rezoning requests, just to let you have an understanding of the discretion that the city has with this project. So this is a comprehensive plan amendment and a zoning ordinance amendment. So the city has complete discretion to approve or deny the project. So what's proposed here is 165-unit senior housing development. Couple of quick renderings of what the project will look like. This is a project I believe you're all familiar with. They did go through sketch plan proposal through both Planning Commission and City Council. So the rendering that's on the screen, this is what we looked at at the sketch plan review. Planning Commission had a lot of feedback. The applicant has made a number of changes to the plan. So just to quickly show you the plan, as was originally proposed. So the revisions that they've made since the sketch, they've reduced the number of units by 20, from 185 to 165, increased some of the setbacks, they've enhanced the architecture to break up that mass of the building, they've stepped the building back from Eden, enhanced the pedestrian experience on all four sides of the building. They've created a potential connection, and we talked a little bit about this at the sketch plan, but a potential connection to the Jerry's parking ramp. An easement would be established over that area, we'll take a look at it in a minute, that would allow the city to construct that connection to the parking ramp in the future. Well, I guess it's a few slides in. This area would be developed and maintained as open space with a sidewalk through the middle until the time if and when the city decides to make that connection. Again, we'll take a look at a couple of renderings in a minute. They've also worked out in agreement with Jerry's to level the grades and create some green space on the west side, especially of that sidewalk along the west lot line. So the proposal itself, you can see where they have stepped it back off of Eden. They've indented, brought the building in to break up the mass on the two ends. I'll let the applicant go through in more detail to describe the building itself. So this request requires a comprehensive plan amendment to increase the density from 75 units an acre, which it's currently guided for, up to 100 units an acre. They're requesting a rezoning from Planned Industrial District to PUD Planned Unit Development. So review of the site plan. So this is that pedestrian connection that I mentioned at the rear of the property. So this is about a 30-foot wide area. So that really has reduced the footprint of the building, in which they can locate that. So you can see the sidewalk through with the extensive landscaping. So this is the Grand View Transportation Study that was approved by the city council a little over a year ago. Here's the site that we're looking at. So you see the plan has the potential to connect to the existing Jerry's parking ramp, the public parking ramp to the back. This connection could be important in the future if we create this street to the north of the building, to the north of the parking ramp, that might prevent access to that ramp to the north. So we'd just like to maintain that possibility for that happening in the future. So you can see how that ramp might come in to connect to the municipal ramp. Again, this is a scenario from that transportation study. So you can see on the site plan, again, pedestrian sidewalks all around the property, pretty significant landscaping. Vehicle access off of Eden, this location here, and then off of Brookview in this location. Landscaping far exceeds our minimum requirements, and they've got a healthy amount of understory and overstory trees throughout. The building would be made of stone, brick, stucco, metal panel. Again, the applicant will get into more of the details on that. They are proposing 10% of the project would be dedicated for affordable housing, consistent with our affordable housing policy. In terms of the compliance table, they are requesting some flexibility through the PUD in order to get some flexibility on the setbacks. And this area is zoned for four stories and 48 feet, while the comprehensive plan does suggest six stories. So primary issues for consideration, is the comprehensive plan amendment regarding density reasonable, and is the proposed PUD rezoning? Is there enough here to justify that PUD zoning? First, in regard to the comprehensive plan amendment, staff believes that increased density here is reasonable, given the proximity to arterial roadways, close proximity to Highway 100. So we've got Eden and Vernon Avenue that would serve this site. As we've talked about in other projects, FAR, the floor area ratio, isn't necessarily a good indicator of density for the site. If we were to take the square footage that's proposed here and develop that with commercial or office space, that would generate far more traffic than would senior housing. So 100 units seems reasonable here, and especially with senior housing, which does generate less traffic actually than market rate housing. The density that's proposed is similar to surrounding communities. This is a table that we often look at when we're increasing our density. So in the city of Bloomington, they allow over 100 units an acre in some of their mixed use areas. Richfield as well, they don't have a limit. Anything over 50 is considered a mixed use in their high density. St. Louis Park, up to 75 units an acre. Minnetonka, their high density is simply anything over 12. And Minneapolis, their high-density mixed-use areas are between 50 and 120. So the proposed density here is somewhat consistent to our adjacent communities. In terms of the PUD justification, staff again believes that the PUD criteria is met. They are proposing the affordable housing, which is one of the things we're looking for as part of the PUD. They have created a pedestrian-friendly development here with much better connections, providing that, especially that north-south sidewalk connection from some of the housing to the south, it allows that pedestrian connection up to Jerry's. They have done, they've provided some sustainable design within the building, high-quality architecture, and they are providing that 30-foot public space and allowing the city the ability to make that connection to the parking ramp. So quite a lot of give-to-get in meeting our PUD criteria. A traffic study was done by SPAC. Vern Swing is here from SPAC to answer any questions that you may have. The conclusion is that the existing roadways can support this project. Mr. Swing is here to answer any questions in that regard, and to the detail that went into his study. So with that, staff is recommending approval of the comprehensive plan amendment and the rezoning, subject to the findings and conditions that are outlined in your staff report. With that, I can stand for any questions.
Thank you, Carrie. Are there any questions for Carrie at this point? No? No? Okay. Thank you, Carrie. Okay. So I'd like to ask the applicant, and maybe as part of your presentation, if you could just kind of review, you know, our comments from the sketch plan and how you address those, that would be great. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you. Good evening. My name is Grady Hamilton.
to the parking ramp. So quite a lot of give-to-get in meeting our PUD criteria. A traffic study was done by SPAC. Vern Swing is here from SPAC to answer any questions that you may have. The conclusion is that the existing roadways can support this project. Mr. Swing is here to answer any questions in that regard and to the detail that went into his study. So with that, staff is recommending approval of the comprehensive plan amendment and the rezoning, subject to the findings and conditions that are outlined in your staff report. With that, I can stand for any questions.
Thank you, Carrie. Are there any questions for Carrie at this point? No? Okay, thank you, Carrie. Okay, so I'd like to ask the applicant, and maybe as part of your presentation, if you could just kind of review, you know, our comments from the sketch plan and how you address those, that would be great. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you. Good evening. My name is Grady Hamilton. I'm with Trammell Crow Company. Thank you, Mr. Teague and Commissioners, for allowing us to continue this discussion for our proposed project at the bus garage site. Aaron Rosseth, who I'll introduce in a moment with ESG, will step forward and do exactly what you just asked Commissioner Olson to review some of the pieces of feedback we've received and how we've incorporated changes to address those. This process that we're in the midst of, as you know, began with our sketch plan with, before this body, and then again, City Council. As Mr. Teague mentioned, we've worked really hard to incorporate the feedback we've received from you guys and your colleagues in the council, as well as our neighbors and the transportation study. And we're excited to share and reveal some of the proposed project updates this evening. In our first sketch plan meeting, we went into quite a bit more detail about Trammell Crow Company and the proposed use. And Mr. Teague mentioned it in his remarks that this is a senior housing project. It's what we would characterize to be age-restricted apartment housing, rental housing, luxury apartment housing is a new option for the area that allows those who are more able-bodied and perhaps aren't in need of independent living or assisted living or memory care facilities to have a great transition available to them in a really strong and rich amenity location. So we certainly can share more about that. And again, Trammell Crow Company, we've been quite active in Minneapolis over the last three years. We've developed four projects, or completed four projects, in just the past three years totaling almost 800 units. We're very, very excited about this one and appreciate the discussion. So joining me this evening, also with Trammell Crow Company, are Johnny Carlson and Mary Lucas, and as I mentioned, Aaron Rosseth and Gretchen Camp from ESG Architects. Aaron's going to step forward. He'll introduce other members of the team. Mr. Teague mentioned a few that are here to help assist with any questions as they emerge. And again, we appreciate the time this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Grady. My name is Aaron Rosseth. I'm a partner and principal at ESG Architects in Minneapolis. We're at 500 Washington Avenue. I'm here with my partner Gretchen Camp, and we also have other engineers with us tonight that can answer any detailed questions. Kim Lee Horn Associates with Civil, Damon Farber with Landscape, and SPAC with Traffic, as Mr. Teague mentioned. Carrie does a wonderful job always of introducing the project, and so I can go through this very specifically or quickly. And Chair Olson, I will try to address the comments that both have come from the early sketch plan review of Planning Commission and Council as quickly and thoroughly as possible. Okay, as we've talked about, there's a lot of existing conditions to the site that have created what designers will call opportunities. Some people will call them challenges. The challenges are certainly that we have an amazing master plan that you guys have developed over many years through the Grand View visions. And we really believe that this could be one of the projects that helps spur sort of new momentum to get that plan going even in the near future. But the existing conditions, there are some challenges. And so in many respects, this is a little bit of a pioneering project in terms of believing that the vision of the Grand View master plan is going to happen, which Trammell Crow and we believe will. And again, this hopefully will act as a catalyst towards that. But the conditions are, we have a railroad on one side, we have the back end of a parking garage on the other, and then we have two sides with major grade challenges. So flipping that into a design opportunity, especially with the grade differences between the north and south portion of it, early on in the diagramming, as we've talked to you as well, is, we looked at that as an opportunity to bury all the parking as much as possible. But the topography was a challenge. And over many great discussions with Jerry's and the adjacent neighbors, we've worked out an informal agreement at this point that, as Carrie had mentioned, that, and they were part of some of these conversations, that those would be timed out. So the ultimate introduction of this new project would look as though it fit in with the adjacent grades and that this wasn't sort of a site not interacting with the neighbors, which was a really good outcome of the last several weeks and months working with them and the city. So as we walk around the site, one of the things that many of you had mentioned is the landscape just wasn't as developed as, and we needed to communicate that more. And I guess, again, Damon Farber is here, and we can go through very specific questions. But the vision is that we activate these pedestrian realm areas as much as possible. One of the important things to us in all design, when we have an introduction of a project like this, is that we create a ground, active ground floor space throughout all four sides of the building. And so there are walk-ups wherever we can do them. It's a little bit of a challenge, again, because we're working with grades, but that's also an opportunity, and I think adds a lot of good variety to the sort of first and second floor as you walk around the site. The entry court, this was a significant pullback on Eden, on the southwest corner, where in the first scheme, we had thought of it more as a sort of a beacon corner. But we listened to you and thought that it was a very good suggestion to push that massing back as much as possible. As we go into perspective, you'll see how both on Brookside and the western side of the building, all of those facades are pushed back significantly after you get above the podium. And you'll see that more clearly as we get into the perspectives.
The western portion of the site, all the way to Brookside. And again, it's envisioned to be a heavily landscaped pedestrian area. That currently, that connection doesn't exist today. As well as on the west side, what Mr. Teague was pointing out, is this pedestrian connection here that would get you to, ultimately would get you up into the Jerry's parking lot. So for residents to the south of the site, that's, we believe, a really important connection to be made.
And these are the primary grades that we've worked with, in a lot of detail with Jerry's, in terms of just a cooperation where the grades would timeout. Here's some early visioning of the types of landscape treatments that have inspired the current design as you see it. Lots of different pedestrian-type elements that help break down the scale and soften the scale around the sidewalks. We've introduced on that promenade on the north side, benches or respite areas, so it interacts with the user more like a park-like setting. And then other types of trellis features and rain gardens around, sort of sophisticated rain gardens that are more participatory with the transition between public and private space at the entry stoops. And so one of the concepts is that those rain gardens are part of that transition and front porch-type idea.
And in your packet, we have a more specific planting schedule on your landscape plan, but this was just more of a visual of the native plants and species that Jesse from Damon Farber has selected for the project. But there's more detail in your packet about that.
So we're going to go through these quickly, as Carrie did a good job of walking around but the building. But this was the southwest corner that I think was probably the most challenging, and we got the most reaction from everybody. This entire area then was pushed back significantly north. And if you go to the next, this is the before and after. And we brought the podium, which you also had many comments out about in terms of really strengthening that around the building. And this entry autocorps area then kind of opens up the entire building with this two-story feature, which is actually where we pulled the amenities down to. So in the plan during sketch plan, we had talked about those being primarily on the second floor and then going, interacting more with the pool and the outdoor courtyard. We're actually making a connection between the first and second, so they're integrated. But the primary amenities are going to be on the first floor. So that'll be a very active use on Eden.
And I think this is a good time to point out that we did bring our material palette here that you see in front of Aaron.
Which we can pass around.
And we can pass it around. But if you look on this material palette, that stone in the lower right corner is intended to be that two-story amenity space. That's kind of the entry court of the project. Also on the project, we have two different kinds of brick that you'll see on this. You'll see on the 3Ds that we're going to go through, we are using a field of stucco for portions of it. And then at the top, we're rendering it as a patinaed copper. And then on this palette, it's really a virgin copper on here. It's that shiny. And then on these renderings is, you know, years later, this will be the look of the building.
So this was the before, again, and then the after. And I think many of your comments also talked about the different materials and that there, as we walked around the building in the sketch plan, I had talked about the horizontal and vertical breakup. But it didn't seem like we had strengthened that with the materials as much as you had wanted us to. So I think that our design team has worked really hard to break down in a way that we still have sort of an overall composition of the building that we're really proud of. But the bookends now are kind of defining those edges. And then the center portion of it reintroduces that podium that you had made several comments about. And it breaks down the scale again at the pedestrian realm where those walk-up townhome feel units are with the stoops, and then the three stories above that.
And on this west elevation, you can start to see the pedestrian connection. That'll get you, in this image, you can see just the edge of the Jerry's building. And we have a couple zoomed-in perspectives where you can see more detail on those walk-ups. So here's the before shot on the east side.
South side.
South side, excuse me.
And then the new version on the south side. And again, reinforcing the podium portion of it. And then one of the council persons during the sketch plan review had made, one of their comments was that the amenity portion of it would go down to Eden and interact on the second floor. And I think that was a great suggestion. And you can see how that's rendered with the stone portion of the building and then the introduction of the canopy to that autocorps area. This is the before again, and then the after. The site plan actually communicates this even better of that meandering path. But these are the, where we're still introducing the townhomes and the connections into those units. The floor plates of the garage, we're parking at 1.3. Those are all flat plates as well. So again, the topography, we used that so we wouldn't have to internally ramp. And there's two access points. So there's one on Eden and then one on Brookside.
Oh, so we have a series of...
We have a series of, this is the east side again. And one of the things that Trammell Crow has committed to doing with the city is allowing a future opportunity for the transit connection to the parking garage if you and the council so desire in the future. Right now, so we've worked with staff and our engineers and Jerry's and introduced this concept to them that this could be done. And in the meantime, we really like the idea of a meandering green path for the near future.
Yeah, so the setback we're providing essentially allows this, it's a raised vehicular connection. And so that, the building is placed to allow that to happen in the future.
So these are the closing slides, and we can certainly, we have other slides here to answer any more detailed questions. But one of the other things that we haven't told staff yet, but we've been working hard to understand in terms of white level of commitment of sustainability, which was a very big deal to many of you, we are going to be a minimum of LEED certified, which took some due diligence on our end to make sure that we could achieve it and not promise it and then not deliver. So do you want to go through these quickly, Gretchen?
Again, we're just in initial stages of going through our plan for our strategies, for our LEED strategies. But in general, we're looking at 18% energy savings, at least a minimum savings of 20% for water usage. We'll be diverting at least 50%, maybe 70% of all the materials from the landfill during construction. We'll be utilizing low VOC materials wherever possible, reducing contaminants in the building. And just in general, having a LEED certified building will really, ongoing-wise, will have a huge savings for operational efficiencies in the long, in the long term. So we're excited to pursue this, and I know that was important to a lot of the Commissioners.
So with that, thank you for listening. We're all here for questions.
Very wonderful. Thank you so much. Do we have questions? Commissioner Strauss?
Yeah, thank you. I think sheet 10, it was kind of that south or west elevation. Yeah, I guess, so the sidewalk on that west side of the property, is that a public or is that a private?
And I'm going to go to the landscape plan, something will be a little easier to see that.
So all of the sidewalks around the building, the four sides, are intended to be public.
Public, okay.
Including the pedestrian promenade. And one of the things that we're still working out, but it's been a very good conversation with Jerry's, is there's minimal amount of land that they are part of in terms of where this landscape would go and how maintenance and things happen. It's certainly in the Trammell's best interest to keep this as clean and manicured as possible. And the conversations are going great with Jerry's to make sure that happens as well.
So the western sidewalk is actually within the Trammell Crow property, as opposed to on the south and east, I believe the sidewalk is actually outboard of the property line? So it will actually be privately owned, but it'll feel like a public sidewalk?
Was this, was that part of the previous supplemental? I mean, I really do like that connection as it leads from Eden.
The building was set back a bit further, because I don't think we had as much landscaping along there. It was, it was just the sidewalk.
The landscaping was certainly developed since we've shown it to you.
Okay. So it's private, it still will look and feel and act as a public sidewalk or walkway. Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Commissioner Hoffs?
First of all, thank you very much for, I think you guys did a great job of addressing a lot of our concerns. One question about the LEED certification and your intent to pursue it. Is it possible that once you get kind of down the road, you would decide not to pursue LEED certification?
I might have Grady come up here and talk about that, but absolutely, I think we're committed to it. And I think maybe Grady could shed a little more light on decisions.
In every, every project that we've done with Trammell Crow that we've committed at this point, thankfully, we've been able to follow through with the commitment. So the project at Carlson Island that we just opened up is, did receive LEED Silver, which we're very proud of. So that's, that's one of the reasons, Commissioner, that when we were at sketch plan, we were working on it, and we needed to run it through enough due diligence with the contractor, understand that we could commit.
I think Aaron and Gretchen did a really good job of addressing that, Commissioner Hoffs, in terms of the process by which we've, we've kind of reached the conclusion that we can be LEED certified. This would be our third LEED certified project in the last three years. So we've become better at it, better at understanding some of the twists and turns that are necessary. And early in the process, obviously, our proclamation to do that is sincere. What level of certification is something that we're not yet able to share, but we certainly are committed to it.
Sure. Thanks. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I was just going to ask, so on, so the entry court, where you pulled everything back, again, I think you've really improved this. And I appreciate you taking into our comments into consideration. But can you walk through a little bit how that entry court works?
And I'm going to go to a different plan that shows the inside of the building. I think that would be helpful.
Sure.
Because it's also where cars are entering, right?
So again, this is...
This is actually, we'll start here and then I can go to the plan.
This is both the ceremonial entry, and it's also the one level, the lowest level entry to the garage. And then the level above this, that's also buried in the hill, I'll call it, or the grade change, would enter off of Brookside.
So I'm just going to go to a plan, then you can see, it's a drop-off, but then vehicles could then go...
Go back one, two.
Oh, yeah.
One more. There you go. So that would be the flat plate along Brookside that would enter the garage.
That's the other entry.
So the autocorps, as we call it, it's something that we do very intentionally where it doesn't just feel like a driveline into a garage. We, this is a curbless environment, so it feels more like a European plaza. And more, it gives more... And more, it gives more emphasis, we think, to a front door expression. And so there is a canopy that comes out just off of the main, there you go. That's what a mouse is for. Main entry canopy here into the lobby. And then all of the amenities, although we haven't broken them out yet because we haven't designed them, but this, all this purple space, I'm not sure how it's looking on your monitor, blue-purple, will be at the, a very active use. So I, several of the planning commissioners and council had suggested that in terms of activating Eden as much as possible. And some of the, one of the other setbacks to break up the massing, not only on the southwest corner, but in the midpoint, we also pulled the back, the building back in this area as well. So again, along the sidewalk on that first level, that podium expression is, the podium, we tried to emphasize as much as possible, like I think we did. But also the, the horizontal breakup of giving more landscaping, and then again, park benches, similar to those precedent images that we showed, would, would show up in this midpoint of that area.
Very much.
Thank you.
Thanks. Now you. Okay. Go forward, Jimmy.
I have a few comments first and then a couple of questions, but like I said last time, but even more now, this is just beautiful. And everything you did to kind of address our comments and concerns seemed to have been taken sincerely and implemented in full force. And I don't know, I couldn't be any more excited after looking at this compared to before. Just to kind of reiterate some of the things I'm seeing, we've been talking about the comprehensive plan and the vision-free Dyna, and this project, to me, kind of addresses the five vision statements. You have inclusive and connected, you're doing the affordable housing commitment, that's, it's a huge undertaking and something we really appreciate in this community. The connect in nature, this is an area we do want more people in to kind of help spur and be the catalyst to a much more thriving Grand View area. So having more active seniors, and then what that does to free up housing stock and keep people in the area and kind of help grow and spur on development. My one question that you answered at the end is the whole sustainable piece and commitment to LEED is a great step forward. The other thing is future oriented. You have, you had design elements toward the back with the elevated roof deck just to allow the flexibility of thinking forward, but then also accommodating a much more robust pedestrian experience completely around the site. And I love the meandering toward the back. So all in all, I really love what you guys did and what you've addressed and how you've taken a complete eyesore full of challenges to something beautiful that's gonna really look nice, kind of on the perimeter of the Grand View. So this will be something people see quite a bit. One of my questions, I think is the northwest corner, your landscape plan, looking at the sidewalks, it looks like there's two sets of steps. Could you speak to that? Are those steps or is that something else?
So we have had some recent, actually very recent, since we submitted some meetings and phone call conversations with Jerry, the Jerry's team. And we, so this, we actually submitted these plans when we didn't want to assume that we could work with the Jerry's grading. We just wanted to have it kind of essentially on our site. So now through a couple, a series of a couple of phone calls, and Trish from Kimberly Hornis here has helped us grade this so that we won't have steps.
Okay, great.
So that's because we are gonna work on the Jerry's land and then taper it, and we've talked to them a couple of times now, and that plan will, will work for them too. So no steps.
Great, thanks. That, that's pretty much, that was the missing link for me, just for the inclusive nature, just being ADA compliant, allowing people to kind of access the whole loop.
Yeah, so I think this plan is the updated plan that does not have steps.
And I guess one of my other questions, and it's maybe just something to think about, one of our other statements for our vision is a community of learning. And as you walk through all this, there's quite a bit that we can learn as a community of what you're doing from a sustainability perspective. But maybe just encourage with some of the landscaping, some more art or ways to kind of teach people about the things you're doing and the things, not just historically, but kind of keep, yeah, sustainable.
Sustainable. There's actually a LEED credit where if you have public education piece to your project, you get a point for it. And so I've done that on a number of projects, and people like it. And especially if it's on the exterior, you get access to more people, so.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, everyone.
All right, so this is a public hearing. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Hi. So again, it's a public hearing, so if there's anybody here who'd like to speak, they can come up to one of the podiums. And not seeing anybody. Oh, good. Hi.
Can I ask a few questions?
You sure can. Yeah.
I'm Jerry Graham. I am in 5275 Grand View Square, unit 3206. I heard him mention age restriction. I'd like to know what that is. For 165 units, how many parking spots, spaces are they making available? How many visitor parking spaces are they making visible? And I kind of would like to know, they're talking a lot on green space. What is their square footage that they are putting out for green space versus the footprint of the building? Thank you.
Please do, we'll keep going with the public hearing.
We could, yeah, we could answer all the questions after.
At the end, yeah, let's do that. So anybody else in the public would like to speak? Yeah, either one.
I'm Diane Reinhardt. I'm at 5250 Grand View Square. One question is, were the 150 people who live at the three Grand View Square buildings ever involved in any of your planning for this project? Because we only recently heard about it and will be dramatically affected by this new building. And the second comment I make is Eden Avenue already is incredibly congested. Our Lady of Grace, when it's in school during the school year, our traffic is horrendous. You know, most of the parents drive their children to and from school. And so during those hours, it's almost impossible to get by, and plus school buses. So has that been considered?
What we'll do is we'll kind of write down these questions, and then at the end of the, when the public spoke, has spoken, we will bring up some of the experts who can address those.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Martha Aubrecht, and I live at 5250 Grand View Square, and I'm in unit 2413. And I just, Diane mentioned just the traffic flow, and she mentioned Our Lady of Grace, but I also would like to bring up that we have the senior center, the Edina Library. There were no pictures of the fact that there are two gas stations on either side of Eden Avenue and Vernon, and that there's a four-way stop after that block. So, and then we've got the people coming in to the Grand View Square condos, the library, the, the office building, and the senior center. And so right now, we are pretty congested. And I noticed that you mentioned future traffic upgrades. But I'm just wondering if there are plans for four-way stops or how we're gonna get the people from one side of Eden Avenue getting into the traffic flow, along with people getting onto it from the south and some from the north that would feed onto Eden Avenue, and what that four-way stop at the bottom, which is, I think, Arcadia and Eden Avenue, and then, I think, getting onto 100. So I just, my question is, what kind of traffic? You said that there were traffic studies, so I'm wondering what those look like. Thanks.
Thank you.
Carolyn Young from 5275 Grand View Square, apartment 3210. I'm especially concerned in our walking paths. I know as a city, you're trying to encourage people to be actively walking, riding bikes, et cetera. Right now, there is no way that the sidewalks coming out of Grand View over to Jerry's apartment meet with the entry to Jerry's Grocery Store as we're walking to Jerry's Grocery Store. And I'm wondering if the plan for this senior building has lined up sidewalks in such a way that as we leave the sidewalks at Grand View across Eden Avenue to go to Jerry's, if there's going to be walkways where traffic has to stop for pedestrians, or how you're thinking about that? Thank you.
Sarah? Okay.
I live at 5225 Grand View Square, unit number 413. I've lived here about three years. There's been no public notice to our building about this incredible construction, which seems like it's ready to be done. And I'm concerned about, having lived here and watched the traffic flow when Vernon was repaved, shunting all the traffic down Eden Avenue and down past our buildings, it was almost impossible to get across the street. Sometimes it was impossible to get to Starbucks. I'm really concerned about the traffic flow. I'm also concerned about the value of the properties. We at Grand View 1 have gone through a $3.676 million project restuckling. And I'm very familiar with that project because my wife is the past president of the board. And much of the work that was done under budget with free decks, trucks, decks, and lighting under project, under cost. So I'm really concerned about the mixed housing that you're planning and the impact financially in terms of the value of our properties. I really think you should have consulted the people that live not more than 100 feet from what your project is. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Motion for post-public hearing?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion for curators. All right, well, so, let's see. I think maybe one of the first things we should address is the traffic, and maybe this would be a good time for the traffic study who spec worked on that, you could address the questions. So we heard number of parking, the visitor parking, the, that Eden Avenue is congested, traffic, buses, OLG, the gas stations, four-way stops. You heard just the overall. Have a second.
Okay, well, Carrie's pulling this together. Madam Chair, members of the commission, my name is Vernon Swing. I'm with, I'm the traffic management, or traffic manager at SPAC Consulting. And we did do a traffic study on behalf of the city. We were, we consulted with city staff on, on what the scope of the study may include, and we reviewed the, the two latest Grand View studies that were done to make sure we had an understanding as to how people could get into the local roadway network as well as the regional roadway network. And so, thanks, Carrie. And so the, as the first slide shows, these were the, the intersections that were studied. And as you can, as you can see, we looked at Vernon-Interlaken, Eden and Vernon, Eden and Sherwood, the existing access to the, to the bus barn, Brookside and Eden, Arcadia Eden, and Grange and Eden, as those both serve to enter the, the regional network as well as the local network. We conducted traffic counts at all these locations. We, in fact, at SPAC Consulting, we use cameras, so we actually filmed all the activity going on at these intersections and figured out what the peak times were. The AM peak being from 7:15 to 8:15, and the PM peak from 5:15 to 6:15. Those were the highest traffic hours that, of the traffic that was going through this study area network. Beyond that, we, we also, we looked at and considered when the building might be complete, and, and then looked one year beyond that as far as what the, the impacts would be at, you know, at a future date. This was considered to be 2019 in this case. And we looked at a no build versus a build condition. And, and then, once we had all of that in place and a model put together for that, we then went back and estimated, based on the Institute of Transportation Engineers statistics, what, what 165-unit senior, which we identified as 55-plus attached housing might, might generate, or is estimated to generate based on those statistics. In addition, SPAC Consulting, we, we maintain our own database of that stuff, of those, of these kind of uses. So we, we've collected and studied a number of different sites within the Twin Cities area, and, and we, we took the number and utilized the number in the study that was most conservative, i.e., generated the highest number of trips, which turned out to be the ITE numbers as opposed to what we were actually experiencing in the Twin Cities with, you know, sites like Applewood Point and, and Gramercy and those kind of things. So we estimated that, we added that on to the, to the projected 2019 traffic, and, and then ran a comparison. When we, when we looked at that, and we also looked at the existing condition and analyzed that as well, when we looked at that, basically, all of the intersections from an operation standpoint, and I want to be careful how I state this, which is, which is a measure of delay, all the intersections with the exception of Interlaken and Vernon operate with, with sufficient capacity available for additional traffic. The intersection of Interlaken and Vernon is, is at capacity. It can add additional traffic before it tips over that, that tipping point where it, the level of service drops down. And as you add more and more, it will, it will spill into other intersections, creating congestion and, and potential gridlock. So there, there is capacity there. I want to be, you know, careful how I state that. It's just, it is at capacity. It's a, it's a busy intersection. The other intersection, the other piece that, that we, that we examined in all this is the amount of vehicle queuing that takes place at all the different, at all the intersections within the study area. The, again, Interlaken and Vernon has some pretty long queues, as you've all experienced and I have experienced, where you have 24 cars that are queuing up to turn left from Interlaken onto Vernon, and similarly, going... Interlaken on to Vernon, and similarly, going eastbound from Vernon on to Interlaken, there are some substantial queues as well. I believe it's 25 vehicles in that case. When you add the traffic from this development to that condition, basically, it adds one car to the queue. That's the, that's how the analysis reads and, and is consistent with a development of this type, which basically is generating 33 trips in the morning peak, and I believe it's 42 trips in the, in the PM peak. So it's a fairly small number of trips, and there's a number of different ways they can go. So when they get added in, and depending on the signal timing and that type of thing, they, they, basically, they add at most one vehicle to the back of these queues. So it's not, it's not a true measurable impact if you, if you, well, it's just, you know, it's a small increment that's, that is added on to what's out there today. The other intersection at Arcadia does, does get an impact from, from the, from the school. And in the morning peak in particular, that traffic does back up and block the adjacent, the next intersection up the line. And, and, but it's for a very short period of time. As you watched it, we recorded for, for three days' worth of filming. As we watched it, it basically lasts for about 15 minutes in the morning, and then there is a school peak at roughly 3 o'clock, and it does back up at that time as well, but it's not, it's not, again, it's not a very long peak. It's just when the parents arrive and, and drop off or pick up their children. So those are the, those are the two intersections. They're, they're having those issues today. You know, you're adding a car to it in the future. It's not a, a large impact, but we did look at it and have, and have addressed it. I think that hit most of the questions. Let me see if I've got...
Did you look at all, like, with the, I think somebody asked about the four-way stops and...
Yep, that was at Arcadia and also over at Grange. We did look at the four-way stops there. Grange works, it seems to work fine. The queues don't block, block any of the adjacent driveways. Arcadia has that morning peak. The other intersections, you know, the, the, one Sherwood, which, which leads up into, or can, you know, leads, goes up into the, the community center there, the library, can be, you know, it's, it, it functions, from an operational standpoint, it functions fine. It's a, you know, it is on a curve, so as you're trying to come into that, it can be a little bit challenging. But as you're coming out, you have, you're on the right side of a convex curve, so you, you have a chance to, you have a chance to see the vehicles coming and going pretty easily.
Did you also look at the parking?
The parking, I think I'll let the architects address, because we did look at, you know, we did look at it, but it's really their, their issue to talk about.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Vern. Chairperson and Commissioners, we have a 1.3 parking ratio right now, so 1.3 stalls per unit. We have 165 units, which is 214 stalls. We anticipate, based on the model of active adult, that the financial partners is doing across the country right now, that the, the ratio per unit that's actually used is a one per unit, but we're at 1.3. So we have 49 stalls in excess, based on that understanding of, of the national trends that this product is being used or developed. So 49 stalls, it would be in combination of both visitor and any of the staff that are there.
So that 214 does include the visitors and staff?
Correct.
Do you want to have an answer on the question about the landscaping number and the open space number? So it's just about 19,000 square feet of landscape area, sidewalks, plazas, and that ends up being about 28% of the site. That was one of the first gentlemen that asked.
As long as you're standing up there, can you also address the age restriction? There is a question on that.
I'll, I'll talk about it. We're doing several of these with Trama Crow, and Trama Crow may want to elaborate on this a little bit more. We had a couple of slides during the sketch plan review that we showed you and the council members, and didn't bring those...
I actually have.
You do? Great, wonderful. So we do think that this is a different market segment that isn't being addressed, certainly in Edina right now. It is 55-plus. That's the intended target market, and that's, that's what it's advertised and marketed toward. The, the idea is that this is not a market-rate apartment where 55-year-olds want to live with millennials. And so that's one of the key differentiators. Hopefully, it's many of the residents that want to recycle their houses, sell their houses to new people, to Edina, but they don't want to leave Edina. And so, and within that market, there's lots of active, healthy adults that are, the actually, actually, the average age of the products that we're doing is around 73, and people going into independent or any sort of skilled nursing is 81. So that delta is what really this population is probably going to be, between the 55 and 70-plus. They're very active, they're healthy. So this is a good graphic. Thank you, Gretchen. Of, on the left-hand side, that would be the age-restricted senior apartments that have no amenities whatsoever, and the multifamily to the left. And then, on the right, independent-assisted and nursing, which is usually a type of continuum of care, more of a campus-type of, age-in-place-type product, which is very much in, in this market and surrounding markets. And the idea is, this is the, the in-between. This is a quick chart that just talks about the type of amenities that would be offered, and the key differentiators, that it's less expensive than the independent living, because you don't have to necessarily use these services. But as the, the population is more understood, these items like housekeeping, transportation, and meals are, at first, à la carte. And if the population wants those as more of a ongoing service, then the, the building is malleable or, or can change over time to keep up with those different changing demographics.
Commissioner Hoffs?
One of the other questions was, and how do you guys envision your residents connecting to and getting to the library, the senior center? If you could show that. Crossing, yeah.
All right, while we're pulling up a slide, one of the questions was, are those sidewalks going to be accessible? And as we mentioned in our presentation, one of the great things that have come out of the conversations with Jerry is that Jerry's, is that those, those grades can be timed out, so the sidewalks don't need steps. So the, the four corner, or the four sides of our building, all of those will be continuous sidewalks, which, that was one of the earlier questions as well.
And I think one of the comments from earlier was crossing here. We talked a little bit about this, and especially with our civil engineer, Kimberly Horn. We'd have to work with the city on this, but there would be a way to stripe that at a minimum. But again, that's not something we could commit to, just because we, we'd need to work with the city on that. But, so I think this, this is the real key...
Right.
...spot there. And I don't, you know, obviously, in other parts of Edina and other cities, you actually can do like a flashing light and things like that, which works really well. So there's kind of a range of solutions, but we need to study it further.
No, I appreciate that. I definitely think it's really important for your whole project to be able to make that kind of connection.
Yeah, we're creating the, you know, beautification here to get up there, and then you can't get across Eden to get there. So, yeah, it's important.
Thanks.
Commissioner Bennett?
I also had just a comment to kind of address maybe some of the public's questions. A lot of the issues that were mentioned about the traffic, that is something that all of us commissioners in the city and the Transportation Commission know about. And if you're not aware, there was a, a large, extensive Grandview transportation study that was completed that starts to address those intersections at different stages in time. And the things that you're talking about, some of the solutions that are planned or foreseen, address that for the positive. And oftentimes, it's projects like these that get those going faster, because the city's not going to do it if there's no need for it yet. But then, when a project appears, you're going to need people to cross that street safely. So the city will obviously be on with getting a protected crosswalk or some kind of experience to, to get to the amenities across the way. And our last meeting, the Vernon-Interlaken intersection came up again. And, you know, the more we hear about that, the more we're going to put pressure on, you know, elected officials as well to start implementing these changes that we got to make. I live right by this area, and it's not easy to get to Grandview, and it's not safe. So the quicker that can happen, the better for everyone.
I think the other one, maybe Carrie, you can address this, but there were a few comments on, they were not noticed or did not know that this is happening.
Yeah, this is, being this is a rezoning and a comprehensive plan amendment, notice was sent out 10 days in advance of the public hearing to all property owners within 1,000 feet.
Was it mail to... Okay. All right, well, okay. No, that, we can't do anywhere.
I should mention, too, that's over double the distance that's required by state statute.
One question I have, maybe Carrie, you could bring it up. In that Grandview transportation study and plan, what was, do you have a cross-section or some, basically, what was, and what were the alternatives envisioned for Eden? Because it was for pedestrian connection, so at least in this site, we saw kind of aerial views of how it ought to look like, but what was the profile? Because I, I do recall that there was considerations for bicycle along Eden, and I don't know if the right-of-way or the use of the trees in between the sidewalk prevents that in the long term, or even short term.
Yeah, I, I don't have that planned specifically with me, but it was reviewed by our, by the city engineer, who was...
Okay.
...active in that study. And if there was something that was required in the transportation study, they would have picked up on that and made a recommendation.
Okay.
Any other comments?
Carrie, what are the uses that are permitted in a PID?
Yeah, uses that are allowed under the current zoning would be a bus garage, office buildings, or light industrial use, manufacturing, those types of uses.
It'd be permitted at four stories?
Its zoning allows up to four stories and 48 feet tall. The comprehensive plan suggests six.
And how tall is the Grandview Plaza units? How tall, is that, how many stories is that? Is it four?
I believe that is four stories.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Bennett?
Carrie, could you speak maybe to the process of accommodating a, a safe pedestrian connection across Eden, and the timing that that could work with this project, since it's obviously the city's property?
Yes, I would suggest that we, you could add that as a condition, that a sidewalk pedestrian crossing be added, subject to review and approval of the city engineer. So in the meantime, from the review from this evening, we would work with the applicant along with our engineering staff to take a look at alternatives on how that could be accomplished. It was mentioned, that flashing light, we've, we've done that in the Galleria area. That might be a possibility here, where we would want to add a, a safe crossing across Eden. So we could have that question answered by the time this went to the city council.
Any other comments? Any motion? Any? Go for it.
I move approval of the comprehensive plan amendment and rezoning, as outlined in the staff memos, adding condition number nine, that an agreement is worked out for cross, for crossing Eden Avenue, subject to approval of city engineering.
Sir, a second?
Second.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you.
So again, this project will go to the city council on July 18th. Yep. Yep, that's great. Thanks, Erin. Nice job. Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's something that's not really in the purview of the planning. That's a good idea. I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, because it will, because they back up.
No, I know what you're saying.
All right. So we're going to...
Gavel.
Hate using that. Okay, we're going to move on to the next. Sheila and Jimmy, we got them. So we have to move on to the next subject.
Thank you, Chair members of the planning commission. Our next public hearing this evening is for a site plan review with a parking variance and a subdivision. This is for a, the Restoration Hardware, or RH, properties located at the southwest corner of Southdale. Aerial view of the site, so it's just underneath the water tower, the intersection of France and 69th Street. Site is guided in our comprehensive plan for CAC, which is the Community Activity Center, allows up to a maximum height of 12 stories. So what the applicant is proposing here is to build a 58,000-square-foot RH. Uses that would be included in the building include furniture sales, a restaurant, a rooftop showroom, and garden terraces. Property Zone PCD III, planned commercial district, the uses proposed here are allowed in that zoning district. So this, this request requires a site plan review and a, it does say setback on the screen, but it's just a parking space variance. There's no setback variances requested here, along with a subdivision. The applicant did go through sketch plan, as you recall, and they have made a number of changes to the sketch plan. This was the, the plan that, that you reviewed in the sketch plan. You may recall, they had the eight-foot walls on three sides of the building. So what they've done is, they've reduced the height to six feet tall, and they've eliminated the walls on the east and west side. So it's just in front of the building, and, and they've lowered it by two feet. That wall is broken up by that wide courtyard gate that you saw in the previous rendering. They've enhanced the architecture facing the street. They've reduced surface parking, especially on the west side. They've enhanced the landscaping and added more green space along both France and 69th. They've added that, a double row of trees, kind of consistent with the, the Greater Southdale Area Study. And they've added a public space along both 69th and France for public seating as you walk along the sidewalk. So again, there's a rendering of what the building would look like, essentially from the intersection. This is a view toward France and 69th from Southdale. Another rendering from 69th Street. I'll let the applicant go through some of the, the building materials as part of their presentation. So again, this is a site plan review. In review of the, again, the... In review of the, again, it's a code compliant in terms of setback. They meet that 50-foot separation that we're looking for as part of the Southdale study from the curb of France to the edge of the building and 30 feet along 69th Street. No change to the existing access. They would take access from the ring road or from the mall road as indicated on the screen. So, in terms of pedestrian connections, the, there's an existing sidewalk that was recently constructed along France. They would simply tie into that and extend to the east along 69th, again, with additional connections to the building from that. Want to point out, I did suggest in one of the conditions of approval here is that they provide a pedestrian connection to Southdale. They've actually already done that. And that is along 69th, they're proposing to extend it beyond the site to connect to an existing sidewalk that does connect into, into the mall. So, they essentially have satisfied that condition already. Terms of landscaping, there's double the number of trees that are required by code. Again, they have enhanced the landscaping from the sketch plan review. They are requesting a platte here where they would create a parcel for the site, so this, our subdivision, park dedication requirements would kick in. That would be a, a condition of approval. Again, the site is code compliant with the exception of the number of parking stalls. So, with all prop, with all our development on the Southdale site, we take a look at the site as a whole. So, we take a look at all of the uses on the, the Southdale site in determining the number of stalls that are required. So, based on all the uses on Southdale, 6,955 stalls are required. Existing on the site or as proposed with this project, 6,026 stalls are provided. So, it's a variance of 929 stalls. So, primary issue are the variance, is the variance criteria met? A parking study was done by WSB and Associates. They also did a traffic study. Chuck Rickert is here from WSB to answer any questions that we may have in that regard. But in regard to the parking, the study concludes that 200, there would be an excess of 271 stalls that's needed for the site based on all of the uses that are going on on the site. Traditionally, since 2001, we've pretty routinely granted variances based on parking studies that are done each time, again, based on the uses that are, that are taking place at Southdale. Started with the construction of the movie theaters in 2001, where a 759 parking stall variance was granted. When the Southdale One apartments were built, again, we looked at the, at the, the parking at that time, another variance was granted. Additionally, with the Homewood Suites project that, well, to begin construction soon, another variance was, was approved at that time. The parking study also includes, you may have heard with JCPenney's site, the JCPenney store is going to be removed and replaced with the Lifetime Fitness and some retail space. So, the study takes into account those uses as well. It's actually a reduction in the, in the square footage that's, when you compare the square footage of JCPenney's to the proposed square footage, it's actually a reduction. So, there's a reduction in the number of parking stalls required for that project. So, there's no city review because it's a replacement of a building essentially. But just want to let you know that all of that was factored into the, the parking and the traffic study. Southdale is unique in the PCD III district. It's the only regional shopping mall that we have. So, there's, there's no others. That's the approach that we've taken in the past, is taking a look at where we are with the, the parking that's, that's required at the time. There's also an alternative, if parking really becomes a problem out there, there's plenty of space or an opportunity to construct structured parking, should parking be a problem. We haven't had any issues with Southdale being short parked since we've taken this approach. So, staff would be comfortable in recommending approval of the site plan as it does conform to all of our minimum code requirements and recommend approval of the parking variance as well. So, with that, I can stand for any questions. And again, Mr. Rickert is here to answer any detailed questions on traffic or parking.
Thank you, Kerry. Commissioner Hops? I always go down the line.
Kerry, could you just speak to your discussions with the applicant in terms of the, the principles we have for Southdale?
Yes, I mean, we went more into detail with that as part of the sketch plan, but they did, the, the principles were shared with them and they've provided responses to them. It's about, in this case, how do we move people through the site to connect to Southdale, to the street? It was about opening, having that main entrance facing the street and again, providing that 50 and 30-foot setback, enhancing the green space, the quality of, of the design. With this project, we didn't have as much discretion to require certain things, being it is code compliant with the exception of the parking. But they definitely did embrace the principles and try to address them as best they can.
Commissioner Thorson?
JCPenney's is on the opposite end of, opposite side of?
Correct. It is.
Are there questions for Kerry? Kerry, is this the first time that somebody's actually subdivided though, the lot from the 80 acres?
No, it was, Homewood Suites did the same thing, where they created a lot up there with the Southdale One project. They just shifted lot lines in order to condense that site.
Okay. Thank you. The applicant like to speak?
Good evening, Commissioner. Stuart Wagner with Restoration Hardware. We're at 15 Coke Road, that's Corder Madera, California. Thank you, staff, planning staff. It's been a great working with you the last couple of months. Thank you, Planning Director, for the presentation. Just having been here before, I'm just going to kind of highlight RH as a company, the proposed gallery here in Adina, and then what's kind of changed from the sketch plan review. So, RH is the national, kind of national retailer, furniture, decor. We offer high-quality furniture and well-thought-out design. We do professional services for design as well. Those are all housed in our stores. Historically, we were kind of an inline mall tenant and we've moved on to more of a standalone concept. We will sometimes take over historic buildings and other times, we will do ground-up construction with good architecture. That's kind of our new vision and also now adding different uses within the building, cafes, wine bars, different ways to have you experience our store and hopefully stay longer and spend more money. Just a couple images, we've got a couple lines. There's a core line that's been around for quite some time. We've got a modern line. We also have a baby, child, teen line that's been implemented in the last couple of years. Again, we do entire floor sets, so whether it's a dining room, kitchen, or a bedroom, you'll walk into a room and see it all kind of displayed. As mentioned, we like to do historic rehabs. This is a building in Chicago, kind of turn of the century, and now we've added a restaurant in the middle of this furniture store that's doing quite well. Here's our ground-up construction example. This one's in West Hollywood and two stories here, and we're really big on rooftop parks and, and greenery, and that would be the case here in Adina. Here's a view kind of looking out from that same rooftop into the Hollywood Hills. Here's the building site as was shown in Planning Director's presentation, the northeast corner of France and 69th Street. And the site plan, what you'll see here right away is the building footprints kind of changed. There's been some additions on either side. I'll kind of walk you through the first floor and kind of show what those additions are. But the, the big challenging thing here is the triangular site kind of makes it, you know, a little, where to place the building. With the, there's an electric, yeah, electric transformer building to the east and the water tower to the north, also kind of, and the ring road, kind of gets us to this sort of diagonal orientation, which is coming directly off the corner. Also, in our mind, it's the best orientation kind of as you approach from that corner, looking through the building, looking beyond that to Southdale Mall. A couple other things you'll notice, a lot less parking, what we, were leftover spaces now have planters, additional trees along 69th. We've also added these sort of little pocket parks or resting areas along France Street, so more greenery, which we can see here in this landscape plan. So, a lot of trees kind of above code here. And, and in the front would be sort of the entrance with the line of shrubs and trees as you lead up to the building. Here's the first floor. Again, the valley entrance or the main entrance that most people would likely come from would be on the north, face, the side closest to the mall. As you'd walk in, there'd be sort of a pantry area, coffee area, to pick up wine or coffee and to be able to kind of roam the area. Right in the middle is this café. Above that would be a, essentially a pyramid, what's the word, glass skylight. So, there'd be a lot of natural light, great area to congregate and have a meal. On either side is these new additions. You'll see the kitchen to the west and on the other side is more of the supporting type electrical rooms, fire rooms, and some offices for the workers. And I'd kind of jump all the way to the roof. The in-between floors would house those other lines of our business, the core line, the modern line. And then we also have a, a series, it's called Design Etelier, and that's where the professional designers come in and help you out. On the top would be outdoor retail and a big area that's conditioned and a chance to kind of show off more furniture up the top and great views, too. Here's the elevations that you've seen. A lot of detail articulation, windows on all sides, a lot of night, light will be coming through the building. Maybe just to highlight again, the wall that's only, the only wall that's left is on the south elevation, six feet in height, right here as I kind of show. We removed the walls from the west and the east. And these you hadn't seen, but this is sort of the 3D modeling, kind of giving you a little detail of the building itself. This would be a view kind of as you're walking up 69th Street and you look to the right. I've got another view here. This is from the Southdale Mall site and sort of the car drop-off area. And view kind of as you get close to the corner, looking towards the building. I'm here to answer any questions. I also have a team here to help out, architect, engineer, and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much. Are there questions for the applicant? Okay. Thank you. We'll probably have some later. So, move to open the public hearing.
A quick question.
Oh, you do have a question.
Yeah, could you, could you speak to the, maybe the reason for having the sidewalk closer along France versus maybe farther from it and that buffer space? I, I see the nice little kind of rest stops with that sidewalk, just looks pretty close.
Yeah, that's existing sidewalks. We were kind of working off that and matching that along 69th. Do you want to mention quickly, if I have a chance, we did have a neighborhood outreach meeting. We had a few neighbors, maybe eight or nine come by and it was kind of an open house format. Just worth, worth mentioning.
Great. So, this is a public hearing? Oh, we have to open it, right? We haven't had it yet. Thank you. Second? All right, second. Okay, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
All right. So, is anyone from the public would like to speak?
Both.
All in favor? Aye. Thanks. Any commission? Any comments? Okay.
I'm really happy. I like that the orientation, you know, not, there was a comment about making it more perpendicular to 69th or France, but I really do like how you, how it's set. I think it's a, it's going to be a beautiful addition to that area.
Any other comments? Commissioner Hamilton?
Just real briefly, thank you very much. It's, it's, you made the few changes that we asked you to make and you certainly gave us a graphic that helped us understand exactly what it is you're about. It, it just couldn't be clearer unless you built it and took us through it. So, thank you very much. I really do appreciate that. It will be, it would be very handsome.
I agree. I really like what I see. I, I think I was one that didn't like the angle the first time you came, but I really appreciate what you've done on France, that you've kind of made that more active and because that was one of our concerns, that we just didn't want that to be, you know, neglected because that's going to be one of our focuses. So, I like it.
I move approval, the site plan review and parking variance as subject to additions outlined in the staff memo.
Thank you. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Did that include the subdivision?
I move to include the subdivision?
Do you second? All in favor, say aye. Aye.
It was outlined in the staff memo, so.
So, again, this one would, will go to council on July 18th?
I'm going to bother with community comment. Don't see that happen. Aye. Okay. So, as far as reports and recommendations, do we have anything in addition? I have something, if others don't. Yeah, do we? Is to talk about, we wanted to add another planning commissioner to the Southdale Work Group. And we had recommended that Commissioner Hamilton be appointed or recommended by the Planning Commission. So, I was going to propose that we discuss that or do we have to make a formal motion? Okay. Motion? Yes. And after, and do you, do you still want to? Okay. So, this?
Yeah, it's a recommendation to nominate a third member of the Planning Commission to the work group of the Southdale area.
I move a nomination to add Mr. Hamilton as a Planning Commission member to the Southdale Working Group.
Second? All in favor? Aye. Yeah. Welcome to the group. It's a good group.
So, to update the Planning Commission on the status of the Southdale Group, we, we met last evening. So, the plan moving forward, we are working out, the work group is putting together a work plan for some of the activities and things that, that they would like to accomplish in the next phase as part of the, the comprehensive plan, small area plan. We're working with AFO and the Bico and Associates, Dan Cornejo, to assist, you know, be the consulting, the lead consultants, to help us put it all together. So, the goal is to bring that new charter with the list of all the work group, the name, list of all the participants in the work group, to the city council along with the contracts and the work plan at the July, July 18th meeting. So, we'll have a busy night at council on the 18th.
Thank you, Kerry. Any other comments? Go for it.
Actually, before you do that, I do have one more. We do not have any agenda items for your first meeting in July, July 12th. So, given, given the amount of night meetings that we all are having with comprehensive plan, I would recommend that we take that night off.
I second that.
The only thing that I would say is, we have been talking about, you know, there's always been kind of been throwing out a little bit of a retreat, and if we can't do a full retreat, we want to do a mini retreat. And I, I also would love to have one less night meeting. But I guess if we have that opportunity, if that is something that's, everyone still wants to meet and really kind of have and really kind of have heart-to-heart talks about what, how we're doing the comp plan and what's, you know, all these other items that we've been discussing, I'd throw that out.
Just do a work session that evening? I'm not sure exactly what you mean by a retreat and the activities or what you're looking for, but we could do a work session to address issues.
I know John and Jimmy, I know that you guys have, is this something that you would feel would be beneficial?
I, sometimes I wonder when I, when I watch the votes here and at council, if we're truly aligned and understand what some of the small area work groups and what the, what the Conference of Plan effort has been and if everybody is as committed or as focused and understands some of the principles that have been adopted when the projects are presented. Some of the questions that come up begin to question the principles that have been adopted. And you kind of scratch your head and say, well, excuse me, council adopted those principles. How can we ask questions about the principles when we've adopted the principles already? So I really wonder if we're all quite on the same boat, if we're, and if it wouldn't be good to be sure that we're thinking alike and thinking in parallel and trying to, I know we're all trying to get to the same place, which is to make it kind of work as well as we can. But our vision for it, I think, is a little bit different. And I think it might be useful to have some discussion about that.
So if I might, we had a little bit of discussion on this at the Southdale work group last night. We thought it would be beneficial because there are different interpretations of the principle, principles and how they're used and as Commissioner Hamilton just described, that we have a work session with the work group where we have the entire planning commission meet with the work group and we roll out the, you know, the large plans and have the work groups take the planning, you know, work through how the plans were developed and the principles were developed, looking at the plans. So we're, we provide that education piece as to how the principles were established, looking at the entire Southdale area, that that might be a good way to educate the planning commissioners who are not part of that group.
Yeah, I like that idea because I think it is, it would be nice to kind of get everybody on the same page about kind of the evolution of that process and how we got to where we are. As well as, you know, when I hear people talk about the principles, that they're principles, it's not something that you can kind of check the box. And I think there's sometimes confusion about what it is that those were meant to be in terms of leading to, then establishing more of a definition about what it is that we actually mean, what, how we're going to achieve those kind of principles about Southdale. So I think that would be a good discussion.
And then to like the policy and, I just had a good point and I just went blank. Well, it's also the principles, I think, like what Commissioner Hamilton was saying too. It's not just for Southdale, the principles. We've adopted it for the whole, the whole city. And I think that gets a little confused, too.
Would this, because some of what Commissioner Hamilton talked about too, and we've talked about is just making sure that our, our impression and understanding of the vision and these principles are in line with what council's is too. Is this, is this what we're talking, having them incorporate too? Or is it just us in this work group? Or is this an opportunity for?
This would be just the planning commission and the work group. City council has formally adopted those principles and asked us to apply them across the city in any project that we look at.
I know, I just, I feel like there's even, well, I think there's a gap there. I mean, just from seeing how some votes go, of how some people might understand those. And maybe that's just timing or a certain project, but.
And it is, as Commissioner Hobbs stated, there's no right or wrong. Everybody interprets those principles differently. It's really about getting the discussion going.
Yeah, I mean, I think that, I think we're all a little frustrated with, there's that gap because we haven't really established what the policies are. And so that's what we're all kind of wrestling with right now. And I'm certainly an advocate for kind of stepping on the gas and getting those established so we're not just kind of wallowing in this kind of uncertainty about how to actually apply these principles.
I keep going back to, we have, we do have, we've got to get moving and get to that finish line. But we are in a much better place than we were before we had them.
Definitely.
Where we didn't have anything to review projects by. So we're in a better place, but we're not quite there yet.
Right.
If we were going to do that, you, we would have to see if the Southdale work group could join us on that night? Or would we be looking at some, would we come to one of their meetings?
Yeah, I think we'd be looking at another date, probably where they meet at the Chamber of Commerce. It's a quite large room where we could all sit around the table. We just don't have that space here at City Hall. So I think we'd have to, to pick that another date.
Okay.
But we want, we'd like to do it sooner than later, so within the next month or so.
Yeah. And I think that's a Tuesdays, is that what they're trying to do now, every other Tuesday? Is that still? Okay. All right. Then we don't have anything on the next, that July planning commission we don't have to meet?
So unless you still, still wanted to meet in some kind of a work session setting, if this.
If everyone else is happy with meeting with the work group, I'd say do that. What do you think? Agreed?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Carrie.
I'm going to just reiterate what you're thinking, that meeting's going to go. Like, I know you kind of touched on it, but I'm kind of unfamiliar to the, where the work group is. I mean, they've been meeting for a long time, right?
Very, very long time.
And, and I mean, where are they currently at and going? Or is this a continual type of commit? I don't know.
Hopefully, yeah, it's not perpetual, but it, I mean, we're, establish the principles. It's kind of, we're going on in phase three, phase four, Ben and who's counting? It's really is the next step is to establish those policies. And so, and trying to get this train to the station at the same time we're doing the other small area plans as a comprehensive plan, that's for me, the urgency, because Southdale is, has been working on this for a while to kind of establish those mechanisms to be really implement what we're talking about is so important right now. And so that's why I'm anxious to kind of go on to the next phase. And that's what we'd be talking about, as well as kind of getting everybody who wasn't a part of that process initially up to speed about, okay, how did, how did we kind of get here? Because it's, it was, it's been a great process. I mean, I joke about how long it's been, but it's been very rewarding. As Carrie said, I mean, we're in a much better spot now than we were when we started.
Think, would it be worthwhile for us to just invite our working group to observe? Would there be any benefit? Just, because I think there's some just uncertainty of, you know, what's next kind of for implementing some of this stuff? Or is this such a different beast that maybe more of it want to apply?
I guess my suggestion would be just to have the, the planning commission meet with the working group first and kind of see all that. And maybe, because, I mean, those working group sessions are, are not closed. People can show up. So to have maybe your area folks to kind of show up and at some later date might be a way to do it.
Yeah, I'm just thinking later date, we might, we're probably done with our.
Are we done?
You're going to be done.
But that's why I'm just like, are we, at least for us, getting ahead of ourselves for an opportunity to kind of inform our own group? Since our timeframe's like three months and yours is three years? I'm being selfish.
You know, I understand what you're, I think I understand what you're saying. I mean, I, I don't know.
Is it useful at all?
I'm, I should, I don't know exactly where you guys are in your process to really even have an opinion, I guess. I mean, for me, it's the most important thing is really helping to get everybody here on the planning commission kind of on the same page.
And right now, their focus is putting together that work plan and getting the contract approved. You know, that, that's going to take a month. Once we get all that finalized, then it's full speed ahead. But it is somewhat similar as to the, the process that you're going through. You know, they did a lot of those same exercises that the 44th and France group is doing. So a lot of that same work, you are patrolling yourself after them.
So I mean, it'll be helpful for us to kind of help impart that wisdom.
Yeah, we can relate some of that.
I'm, I'm going to take a risk here. I have attended most of the small area plan meetings from 44th and all of one on the Southdale. But my sense is on the Southdale area plan, that with Michael there, there's been an ability to focus on inspiration and aspiration. There's been an absolute, clearly the group, because of their three-years commitment, was, was committed that change is inevitable there. Significant, powerful change is inevitable there. And in order to control that and focus it, the target was set very high. And my sense is on 44th, that it is more of a, to date a shopping list for what people might or might not be interested in and not yet focused through a consultant group who has the long-term ability to vision and impart vision for the possible. And I'm worried about that. I'm not worried about it on Southdale because it seems abundantly clear to me that the commitment has been there for years to vision, to take something that was the best in the world when it was built and say, above all, we're not going backwards. And that sets an aspiration that's significant. 44th and France is a nice place. It could be a wonderful place. How is it that we motivate ourselves and our consultants to get there? And the process that I see is not as aspirational, I think, as you're trying to make it be. And that's the driver, I think, for wanting us to get together and see how we can shape it together to be more than not just. And I don't know how to do that from here.
Hoping you did. Hoping you're leading into that. Darn.
But are you in agreement?
Yeah.
It's your small area plan. So, so what we're saying, what, what the hope was, the thing that I was thinking about in all the retreats that we'd been talking about, that I've been suggesting that maybe we have, is that this group can get together with our consultant team and say, folks, we're not going for here. We're going for here. How do we get to here? Because that's what we're paying you for. We want to get to here. And, and I think what we're going to end up with is an absolutely marvelous, from Met Council's point of view, comprehensive plan. It's going to work. I don't think that's what we're looking for. I think we're looking for something that's, that's going to exceed those expectations. And, and I, there, I've said my piece. What are you going to do with it?
I, I certainly appreciate what you're saying. And I, I think that's what I've appreciated with the, with the, working with the Southdale group is, we really did start it kind of that. And it, I should mention, I mean, it was, it, it started from a contentious place, honestly, between the folks that live in the neighborhood that were, and had a reason to be fearful of what was happening in their community. And I think we're able to get everybody together to really talk about, what do you want this area to be? So I, I think it's worked well and I, I agree with you. I want us to, to be doing that citywide.
And so how, how do we drive that bus?
I think we need to drive the bus.
You are the drivers of the bus. So when you're, I believe it's the second, the second community meeting. You know, we still got to have the first one. But that's where you're going to start to look at alternatives for what this place could be. And so drive more aspiration in one of those alternatives.
That's a good point. Yeah, I, I think we're probably up against a challenge of, we're new to this. Lots of us are new to this and it's a very short schedule. And getting people to start thinking outside the box and accepting that doesn't necessarily happen fast either. Kind of got to just wrestle with ideas over time. And, you know, maybe that, you know, three years is actually a really good process to get a really, really good result. Allows everyone to kind of unify a lot maybe quicker and more effectively than we just have a short timeframe. So I think that's what I'm worried about too. And what John's saying is like for deliverables, it's, we have the first community meeting and then we almost have recommendations after that. And I don't think there's a ton of unification in our working group because we've only met like twice and most of it was to just inform them, inform them on what is even happening. So.
Can I just, like, I know, I keep hearing that. I, I agree, it's a short time. And I know that we, at one point, kind of overlapped the small area plans and then we separated them all. Are, are others concerned that we're trying to crunch it all in too fast? So we could start moving on to, you know, 70th and Cahill? Or, I mean, are we, do we have any flexibility in this?
We always do. We, we have to have our plan submitted by December 31st of next year. We can always request an extension. You know, we did that 10 years ago. So I throw that out there.
I, and I, I mean, I certainly have, I would rather get it right. I think we all feel that way. And so, and I, and at the end of the day, we're the ones really with our hand on the throttle in terms of, you know, what we need. And, and I think we need to take control of that.
I'm going to suggest that, that there's a little bit of Minnesota nice that runs around this table.
Oh, thanks.
That's a good thing. It's not a bad thing. But I, I, I think, I think perhaps the challenge is talking with our consultant team. They have the capacity. They certainly have the capacity to do anything we can ask of them. They do. They're talented people. They're very smart. They're very skilled. But I, my, my sense is that there's a slight disconnect between where, at least where I think we want to go and where, and where we're going. And, and I think it's a bridgeable one, but I think it has to be addressed. And I think you have a work group meeting coming up very soon. And, you know, I, I, if you want to throw me under the bus there, I will cheerfully come. I don't know what the assignment would be. I don't know what it would look like. And I, trust me, I'm not suggesting that I know how to do it, but I do know that they do and they can get us there. But I think there's a little bit of haze that we need to cut through so that their vision is, so that they can make planners out of all of us. They can make visionaries out of all of us. And yes, we need, we need, you need to drive the bus in your small area plan, just like Southdale needs to drive the bus in its small area plan. But, but we need to, to drive our consultants. And I think we can push them to push us to do that.
Again, just going to add that, you know, even at the work session tonight, it's like, well, let's start, you know, identifying who should be on the next work group member, you know, starting some of those initial. Well, that could get started now and you could still extend. I just think that we could extend some time. And, you know, they could start working on getting the other small area plans set up and ready to go and double duty a little bit on some of the overlap, some of that and, and give us more time. Because it is a crunch. I looked at that schedule, what was it, August? That you're going to have the, I mean, we're also throwing, telling you guys we want you to stay involved with this months longer, but it goes by fast and it's worth it.
I think one of the challenges on the consultant team is to be sure that, that Mr. Cornejo and, and Mr. Close are involved throughout. They are the visionaries. They were presented as the visionaries. They were sold by the consultant team as the visionaries. They are the visionaries and we in large part have not seen them. And I think we need very much to see them. We need to see them every day. We need to see them in every meeting. And we need to hear how they might help us shape it differently.
And we'll say what you're saying once you get to the policies and which we're going to be getting to faster than. Maybe that process. It is way more informative for our group to have those kind of conversations upfront so people know what policies can look like. I don't even think they know that this is going to involve policies and what are those really going to look like. I mean, we tell them, but they have no idea what it looks like. Here's the Wooddale Valley View Plan, but that's not the same as 44th and France. Here's the Wooddale Valley View Plan, but that's not the same as 44th and France. So I vote, yeah, let's do a work session with them, so at least we can get there faster.
Motion, Jerk?
Aye. What's this, what's this Graham, you're talking?